Organizations focused on developing equities in an unjust society. Byron is a devoted father to amazing and a head coach for a lacrosse program, serving underrepresented communities and an avid black football player, Wanderlust Africa. Please help me welcome Byron Bailey.
Thank you so much, Leslie. It's an honor and a privilege to be here. Kind of what Leslie already said, I'm just here to do my service. I gained a lot of leadership experience and training from TCU that I've been able to employ in my different avenues of life. So when Leslie gave me the call, I was excited to take the challenge and so I'm here. To being with you all and I hope I say something that make a little bit of sense to somebody.
Thank you Byron. Help me welcome Ms. Shanice Cox. A rising second year medical student at Texas Christian University and University of North Texas Health Science Center School of Medicine. Ms. Cox has aspirations to provide affordable, quality healthcare for patients residing in underserved communities. A product of an underserved community, her goal is to use innovative measures such as utilizing patient education, practicing evidence-based medicine in low-income communities, and providing community-focused care for individuals who cannot otherwise afford it. Currently, she is working on her research which focuses on prenatal health disparities in Tarrant County, Texas, which are influenced not only by complex health needs, but social needs such as housing instability, immigration challenges, criminal system involvement, unlawful disenrollment from federal or state disability benefits, and the absence of paperwork to guide responsible decision-making for both mother and father slash partner. Ms. Cox plans to expound on her life experiences and understanding that a physician's propensity to meet patients' social needs is as important as any medical advancement's ability to cure their disease. TCU, please help me welcome Ms. Cox.
Hi, everyone. I'm so pleased to be here today to share in this experience with all my fellow Black and amazing students, past students and alum. So happy to be with you guys here today virtually and I'm extending all my love. Hopefully this is great and I get to answer some good questions that you guys threw my way today. Thank you for having me.
Awesome. Thank you. Ms. Melody Dotty. Melody Dotty is the Assistant Director for the TCU College Advising Corps, the TCU chapter of an innovative national organization that works to increase the number of low-income, first-generation college and underrepresented students who enter and complete higher education. After working with a large national corporation, Ms. Dotty pursued her passion for learning into a career in higher education. Since Ms. Dotty has worked in higher education for programs that emphasize college access with P-16 initiatives. She holds a BS in Comparative Religious Studies, a Master of Education with an emphasis in student development and leadership in higher education, and is currently pursuing a PhD in higher education here at TCU. Please help me welcome Ms. Melody Dotty.
Hi, Leslie. Thank you for the introduction. Thank you, Dr. G. I look forward to having a great conversation with the other panelists and our TCU community at large.
Awesome. Mel, it's always a pleasure to share space with you. And last but not least, we have Mr. Kelton Hollins. Kelton Hollins is a student athlete in the Curriculum and Instruction Curriculum Studies Master's Program here at TCU. While balancing the workload of athletics, he received his Bachelor of Science in Youth Advocacy and Educational Studies. Throughout his tenure at Texas Christian University, he has prided himself on being more than an athlete. Hollins has served as President of Spark, an organization started by TCU football student athletes to provide motivation to local youth about the importance of education and serving the community. His research interests include academic experiences, mental health, and the holistic development of Black student athletes. Kelton, you do it all. I'm just happy to have this space here with you, my friend. Please help me welcome Kelton Hollins.
Thank you, Leslie. I also want to thank God for another day of life and all of the blessings that I've received throughout my life. And I'm so excited to be here with you all. It is an honor. So yeah, let's see where this goes.
Yeah, I like how we're all like, okay, let's see what happens. We just never know, right? I mean, wow, just reading your bios, can I just say how beautiful this room is right now? It embodies everything that our ancestors believed would come to fruition and here we are. And so everyone else, I mean, the energy is just glorious right now. So I want to keep it at that level and propose the first question. So if you are in the audience, please feel free to utilize the Q and A forum where you can submit your questions for the panelists. The purpose of the session is to have an open discussion on being Black in the academy. And so we will discuss topics such as the sense of belonging, representation across campus, Black student athletes, racism in medicine, and being marketed but not accepted. These are heavy topics. However, they are necessary topics to discuss when reforming what we know as the current education system. So my panelists, are you ready? Ready? Okay, I got the headlines. I got the thumbs up. So let's jump in. So for the first question, and it's an open question for any one of our panelists to answer. Let's discuss barriers before we actually step foot on campus, right? Okay, so I want to know, was TCU an option for you? And what I mean by that is TCU is a part of the Fort Worth community, which consists of numerous cultures that do not seem to be represented at TCU. So did you ever think about coming to TCU? Was it an option? Was it a last-minute type of thing? Were you worried that you would not find or be able to locate your community, people that look like you? Faculty members, staff members? What was that experience like before stepping foot on campus?
If y'all don't mind, I'll take a stab at it going forward. I'm sure we all have our own experiences. So I'm a Fort Worth native. I actually live down the other side of Berry is where I grew up. I did not attend TCU as an undergrad. I didn't even consider, I didn't even apply. I didn't even consider it an option. You asked about finding your place. Again, as a Fort Worth native, my grandparents grew up here in Fort Worth, in segregated Fort Worth. And so growing up, I carried their stories, their legacies. We came to this side of town like for Boston Market, which no longer exists here. And you know, this was the white side of town. This was the rich side of town. This was the side of town when I passed houses and saw people outside in their yards that no one looked like me. And I had the expectation that when I was on campus, it would be the same thing. It was a wealthy school and my family was not wealthy. I'm a proud first-generation student. I was a Pell Grant recipient. I appreciated all those advantages and I just, in my mind, didn't think that any of those characteristics or traits would align to this or what would there be for me? I'm glad to be here now and I've had amazing opportunities, but for seventeen-year-old me, considering where my future would start, I didn't, as a native, didn't think it would start here at that time.
Thank you for sharing.
I'll share too. It's funny, I actually came to TC, I went to TCU like my sophomore year for the it was like minority high school conference. And I remember going there and literally counting the number of Black people that I actually saw on their campus. And I think I got to like five. And I was like, nah, I would, I would never go to go to TCU because because I wouldn't know Black people. I mean, I'm coming from, you know, a pretty much high school that was ninety-five percent Black, maybe five percent Hispanic, zero percent white and anything else. But the person, well, two things really reeled me into TCU. Obviously Community Scholarship, you know, which I was blessed enough to receive. So that was one thing. But the second thing that really reeled me into TCU was a guy who no longer there, and that's Mike Marshall. My main, my first school was UT, University of Texas, between UT and TCU. And but Mike Marshall was the type of guy who would, and he was, he was a Black man, as I should say. He would, he would reach out to me, call me, check on me, send me email to see, you know, how were my thoughts on TCU? Would I have supported at TCU, kind of calm my fears? I won't say fears, but you know, my apprehension about going to TCU and being in such a foreign place. And you know, on the flip side, you know, no one at UT really reached out to me and did that. So looked at Michael Marshall's care and attention to who I was as an individual and you know, checking on a trek that I've never done before and very few in my family have ever done before. And so I appreciated that. And so while, you know, I kind of knew I was getting into with, you know, the general population being predominantly white, I knew that I at least had, you know, Mike Marshall and Darren Turner. Was Tamika there at the time? I know she was, I think Tamika probably just got there when I got there. But I knew I had that community of folks who would, who would, you know, help support me even if I didn't have, you know, any other place to go. So that's kind of my decision on going to TCU and pretty much how I made the best of TCU.
Thank you.
I can go ahead and talk. So thank you, guys. Those are awesome to listen to your stories. So I had something very similar. I started undergrad at the University of Notre Dame. And no, I don't mean to shout out undergrad institutions, but I'm just giving you like context of my story. And I had been a young Jamaican-American student raised in Fort Lauderdale, Florida. So that was unknown for me to like move to the Midwest. And it was really hard for me culturally, socially. And so after that, I knew I was wanting to go to medical school, but I didn't get the appropriate support that I needed, especially as a Black woman who truly wanted to do medicine and really didn't have any context as to how do I go about this journey. So I ended up doing my master's program at Hampton University because I was like, I gotta go to HBCU. Somebody gotta take care of me. And I got that community. And there was one day, two women stepped into, they knew that our graduates were applying to med school at the time. And two women came in, they set up their stuff. I was like, what's going on in here? And it had been Dr. Lisa McBride, who's over at Diversity Inclusion at TCU, and then Dr. Cunningham, who's no longer with us. And they came in, they was talking, I want to say like a big game, right? All this information about how their med school is innovative, is different. I was like, okay, how is it different? How is it innovative? Everyone's med school is different and innovative. But they're like, we truly want to craft the idea of an empathetic scholar. And in my head, I was like, what does that mean? Like, I want to be a good doctor. I want to be a nice doctor. I want to be an approachable doctor. But when they showed us the curriculum and how they would really do this and structure in a way where you can teach this to someone, I was like, all right, this is different. And so I never knew about TCU, moreover than like football, like sports. Jamaican athletes have come here to train for track and field. So that's like the only connection I've ever had. And so I was just like, okay, this is maybe something I can look into. But in my head, I was still like, I think I want to go to a historically Black medical school because of my experience at Hampton. And so I was like, I'm nervous, you know. I was looking at pamphlets. I was looking at the student body. And I was like, there's like a few Black students on the page, you know. I don't know. Maybe we'll see. And they finally came out with their newsletter for what the med school was going to look like. And I was like, okay, I know that change can happen if you see Black people within administration. If I can see images of myself in people who make decisions on behalf of students, then I can give this place a shot. And so I saw the newsletter and I saw Dr. Franks, who's over at Student Affairs. I saw Dr. Dixon, who's our like psych coordinator. He's one of our professors there at the time. And Dr. McBride as well. And then I saw images of our physician development coaches. And so those are the coaches that we take time, they groom us essentially to be the doctors that they think we should be. And I saw Coach Daisy and I saw Coach Candace and I was like, man, like, I see Black women in medicine doing something. And if they're going to be responsible for the doctor that I am one day, I could give this place a shot. And so that's, that's how I made it here. And I'm so happy that I made that decision because honestly, like, seeing the representation of them, even when things get really tough, like continues to propel me to keep going. Because I see them and they're making decisions to make sure that they have students from underrepresented populations, from first-gen families, to make sure that they have a position and a spot where they can thrive in medicine.
I love that. And I continue to hear this representation piece, right? That representation and resource. Kelton, what about you?
Yeah, so it's pretty clear why I was brought in to TCU. So I'm from Baton Rouge, Louisiana. And without going into too much of the dynamics of Baton Rouge, Louisiana, I'll put it to you like this. As a Black male, you can either turn to the streets or you can turn to sports. So obviously I turned to sports. And like Shanice said, if it wasn't for football, I don't think I would have heard of TCU. More specifically, if it wasn't for the Rose Bowl, the mascot being a horned frog, because it made me say, what the heck, TCU? And then the Peach Bowl, right? I would have never considered TCU, even thought of TCU. And so for me, it's pretty simple. I was, I was brought in to play football. I was being recruited by TCU my junior, senior year, or really my sophomore, junior year. And you know, like cool, cool football program. They won a Peach Bowl and it really opened my eyes. And so, I mean, it's just that simple. I for sure couldn't afford it. So if it wasn't for football, then I wasn't coming to TCU at all. But for me, football was definitely my way to college, no matter where it was.
Thank you. And once again, I keep hearing this, the need for representation. Each one of you mentioned maybe a certain someone or something that influenced your decision to come this route. So I want to take a deeper dive into what that means for other Black students in the Black community as a whole. And so the next question is geared towards resources for Black students here at TCU. And so many times institutions are reactionary instead of proactive, right? So we witnessed the murder of George Floyd in May within facing a pandemic. And what proceeded was reactions from universities nationwide to create statements that represented universities doing fill-in-the-blank or lack thereof, right? Or what we're going to do as a result of this innocent man's death. And so I ask you, and hopefully hear from about two of the panelists at least, and before we move into our next question, how can TCU be more proactive when addressing racial inequities facing the Black community?
I guess I can kind of chime in a little bit. I would say the biggest thing, at least from where I'm at right now in life, I think TCU can listen to the students. The students will tell you exactly what they need in order to be successful. So if I'm telling you what I need and you're kind of turning it down, what does it say about the institution? What does it say about the people that are running it? And I get it, everything is complicated. It won't happen overnight. It's complex. It's a complex problem, therefore the solution would be complex too. But I think the biggest thing is just listening to students and actually taking steps to kind of implement what they're saying, or at least give them some validation or reaffirmation that you are like taking into consideration what they are saying. Because, I mean, like, it's really not built for us. And so when we walk in, we know that. And so if I'm telling you that, yeah, I need this, this will be very helpful for me, then let's, let's start getting the ball rolling. And it shouldn't take some tragic event for that to happen. It shouldn't take something, you know, crazy. Like, if I'm telling you this, then if you're here for me, you know, then we should have this rolling.
Thanks, Kelton. Any other panelists?
Yeah, I can piggyback off Kelton. I think it's so important to listen to the voices of the students who belong to this group of people that are hurting. And I think that it's important for TCU to make a genuine effort, not just an effort, but a genuine effort to not just like listen to the voices of these students, but to be ahead of the ballgame. Like before you, I feel like schools, I've noticed that with some of the schools because we were trying to build an organization, you know, Black Lives and White Coats and stuff like that. And they were doing a lot of efforts to be on the grounds and students who wanted to participate in protests and stuff like that. What does that look like? And it's just like, support the students when they want to do that, when they want to let their voices be heard. What does that look like for a student if, God forbid, they're protesting and get arrested? What does that look like? You know, will the school support them in that? Because they're not necessarily breaking a law or anything. They're just exercising their amendment right, you know? And so I think they have to like, jump in the position where it's like, you don't send out a statement after like a hundred schools in the nation have done it because it looks good. Like, you know, be proactive about that. Send these letters out. Make sure that your students of color feel safe and they feel supported. I know that was one of the things that we brought up at our medical school. Like if we were to start up this organization, if we, a group of students, they were, you know, on West 7th, like marching. Like, what does that look like? Because you're always afraid that if you step out of the box and you know that you're pursuing like graduate studies and stuff like that, what does that look like for your permanent record if you, you know, happen to get into a situation with the police? And so it was one of those things where the, the school was very much supportive or, yeah, yeah, supported us in, in a way that we were, you know, very firm on saying, well, yeah, we want to get involved, we want to be active. Because if you're in a situation that, you know, you're, you're a student, you just want to make sure that there are no like negative repercussions when looking to apply to graduate school or looking to apply to residency and stuff like that. So it's just like being proactive and having this genuine effort to support the students and the voice of the students and their actions as well, when they want to, you know, have their voices heard.
Right. Thank you, Shanice, for sharing that. Yeah, and I think with our motto being inclusive excellence, that's what that is, right? That is the representation, speaking out when things are wrong and being able to know that your university supports you. However, when we take a deeper dive, I think these past couple of months, I don't know about you all, but I was fatigued. I was tired of fighting the fight. We've been fighting for so long. So when, when is it going to end? And so I think racial battle fatigue is real, right? And if it was not real to you before the pandemic, it has your attention in more ways than one now, I think that we can agree. And so the Black community suffers from an increased rate of mental health concerns, including anxiety and depression. How do you all cope with the stresses of what is going on? You're fighting so many battles. You're a Black student at a historically white institution. You're serving in different capacities. You have families. How can a university like TCU ensure resources for our communities to institute adequate mental health resources?
I guess I'll take the leap on this one. It's kind of going back to what Kelton already mentioned about support, but I guess I will take it a little step further. And it's not just, you know, I feel like support in that context is more so about, is more reactionary. But I think when I think about support, I'm thinking more so about educating your community about why inclusion is important, right? And not necessarily, you know, the reactive approach of just being inclusive because, as someone else already mentioned, everybody else is being inclusive and that's what's hiding these streets right now. I think the, the university has to reconcile its love for Black bodies, i.e. the sports. You know what I'm saying? But not with their disdain for the Black mind, i.e. the rest of the student population and even the student athletes as students. And so, so the university has to find some sort of atonement on figuring out, you know, what makes, what makes the Black population tick and how they provide, how we, how do we provide value outside of just our bodies as student athletes? And so I think that would, requires the work that you all do, you know, as the REI department in really digging into, you know, the value of Black, Black students, Black graduates of TCU. And it requires more than just highlighting them, highlighting us on throughout, through Black history, my, but also just looking at some of the great notable names that have come through TCU and I hold esteemed positions. But, you know, and so I say I'd like to go to the previous question, but the current question is, again, when you do that, that reflection and inflection, you think about, you know, well, you understand that, you know, this could be taxing, right? I remember, you know, and so once you get to the point of empathy where you can build forward. Like so, I used this example a few years ago on Facebook, you know, when, when I, I use football because TCU loves the football. But I remember in 2000, I think it was 2014, you know, we was one shot outside of one of the football playoffs, right? And so, and so I think we were, we were ranked, we were ranked third and we had one game left against Iowa State, you know, and we were there, we, Iowa State by fifty points, by about fifty points. And then we were number three and even though we beat Ohio State, the Tinos, no, Iowa State, I'm sorry. Even if it be Iowa State, the Tinos before us, did exactly what we supposed to do, beat them by fifty points. The committee just came back and said, you know what, y'all not good of being in the playoffs, even though y'all did our job. So y'all not gonna make the playoffs. Y'all go to sixth place, right? And so somehow, some way, white people throughout TCU alumni body and just fans across the nation saw that as a sort of injustice and they were pissed off about it, right? And, you know, and, you know, you have any TCU fan alumni now, they still pissed off about it, right? But that's our experience as Black students every single day. You know what I'm saying? Like we do everything we supposed to do, you know, which I tell us we supposed to do and dominate, right? But still, when we have, still our cries are unheard and our cries and our pleas are unanswered. And so that was just one example of how I felt like, you know, the university could create that empty and then use that empty to create more proactive, you know, resources in hearing what, you know, the students and Black alumni have to say about, you know, issues of injustice and maybe, you know, once those true conversations are had and received, then once we tell the university, you know, this is what we need to, to heal, they'll be able to provide those resources based on that true understanding of damn, this, like, they're really hurting how XYZ was hurt. So that's kind of my two cents on that.
Yeah. I'll hop in after that. And I just want to say, Leslie, you didn't start with the easy questions, did you? Start with the slow pitch. Like, yeah, let's do it. So there's a lot to that. So I'll just do two, two-part answer to the question as brief as I can. The first part, and I'll preface that my mom will probably be mortified that I'll share this with you. But I do think that we should, you know, practice normalizing, you know, mental health, especially in our Black community. You know, after the George Floyd stuff, you know, we have Brianna, Brianna, you can't see Al Tatiana on the other side, but they're here in my office. And, you know, after George Floyd, I had to come back to the campus a few weeks later in June for some stuff with hiring for our program. And I parked and I was walking up to our building and I saw a police vehicle, as I have many times, right? And it was just something different. And walking into the building, I had my first anxiety attack. I didn't know what was going on with me. I had to call my doctor. I was like, I can't breathe. I'm hurt. I'm on the floor in the bath. Like, what is happening? And her walking me through it and I'm like, I don't know how to process this. I don't feel safe in my building. Right? And so I think that when we talk about, you know, mental health and you said, you, you talk about racial battle fatigue and obviously we're on the higher ed side. So it's one of our fun buzzwords in the classroom. But even in the academy, I see racial battle fatigue talked about as a theory that happens outside of this physical campus, right? When racial battle fatigue is happening during nine to fives, whether it's the overtaxation of, you know, employees of color with additional duties assigned that we didn't quite ask for, you know, to the social aspect. So racial battle fatigue is not a theory. It's not some concept. And it doesn't happen to people on TV or just people in the community. It happens here. And I think that, you know, the institution reconciling like this is, this is a lived experience and it's a continued lived experience for people who are here. And it's like, what I don't need is, you know, well, I do need the employee assistance program. That's great. But what I don't need is more of that. I need more of the systemic changes that are happening to understand that this isn't just a one-time, well, that, that was a one-time thing. But the, the hurt and the pain and the things that we carry into our workplace don't disappear. You know, it doesn't disappear when we walk in. We're still carrying them in the buildings, in the classrooms. And I think, you know, it ties to mental health because I say, you know, as a, you know, I wear multiple hats here and I love my purple hats. And I can't under, I can't untwine being a purple horned frog. I can't untwine being a purple horn frog from being a black woman and I wouldn't want to. But with those dual identities, there are challenges and there are struggles. Um, and systemically, like you said in your previous question about, you know, how can we make change? And it was like a lot about listening. I think TCU does a really great job at listening. But I think a lot of the forums that are set up in which, and the ways in which we listen are set up around white comfort. I think TCU has to do a little more to be uncomfortable. And we talk about, you know, the idea in, in our, uh, you know, in our field about sitting in discomfort. We gotta take a whole lot of seats and sit down for, for, for a little bit longer than necessary. Um, and then not just saying like, how can we listen to you? But what are the modes in which you'd like us to listen? Because it's not always coming up to a podium and a microphone and speaking truth. Sometimes it's art. Sometimes it's classroom, sometimes it's a, a physical protest, walking down the road, which I'm glad we were able to do here and support students and. You know, and have blockades. But no, people ask us what we want. They ask us how we feel, but then ask, in what way should we be, do we wanna express that? Um, we're told to express ourselves in ways that are comfortable for the listener. Um, and I, I think that starts the problem.
I appreciate both of you all sharing that and I agree, um, sitting in that uncomfortability will c- make us grow. Because we don't have an option as an institution. And so it's doing more than listening, I think. Almost we're at that stage where we're saying the same things. We're saying the same things in a different form from our own perspectives and experiences, but it's the same narrative. It's either we change or we're going to lack, right? And so, um, I have a question for you, Kelton. Um, once again, if you all don't know Kelton, you need to get to know him. He is creating so many avenues at TCU. Um, for black students to follow, so we love him. Um, and so my question, Kelton. Um, being a student athlete and balancing commitment to your sport and academics can be challenging. It can be time consuming, right? Um, especially during a pandemic in which we are still in. Um, while fighting racial injustices on top of grappling with institutional racism. How? How do you do it? What resources do you see there's a need for as far as ensuring black student athletes do not feel as though they are being tokenized? And can you talk a little bit about your efforts this past academic year, um, in regards to the mural?
Yeah, so um, dang, that's a heavy question, but let's see if I can dissect it all without missing anything. Um. So yeah, I'll take you back to the mural, uh, the in-racism mural. I wanted to do that because, and I, I knew I was gonna get some pushback from students, well, not me personally, but I knew. It would be some pushback and um, and that's why I was like, should I really do this or not? But then I was like, you know what, let's go ahead and do it because we have to be uncomfortable. We have to be uncomfortable. So whatever comes with it, it comes with it. Um. And so I decided to do the mural because I just wanted to spark conversations. We know. Change the not, does not come unless we start by having conversations. And so, um, I was like, you know what, let me just. Contact the right people and see if we can get this mural done. And everything fell through. Um, and the location is very important and very symbolic. Um, so those who have seen the mural knows that it pretty much is in the middle of. Uh, the athletic side and the academic side. And so no matter who you are. You will come in contact with it and you have to interact with it somehow, say before, even if you're coming on your, your tour for TCU. Um, you start at the blue, you have to interact with it, your parents have to interact with it, fans coming to the game have to interact with it. Um, and so it's more so of a, okay, yeah, this is a statement in racism. And if this bothers you. Then it should, and you need to reflect on why it bothers you and you need to have a, a conversation with yourself. And so that's where that stemmed from. Um. But for me, you know, I came in a student athlete, um, in the middle somehow I became an athlete student. We know the stressors of playing football, especially at this level, is crazy. Um. But now I will say I'm transitioning into being a scholar athlete. Um, I'm starting to see the importance of being more than an athlete. And so that's kind of the approach I took with the mural as well, being more than an athlete. Let's, let's follow the lead of LeBron James and Colin Kaepernick, those who aren't afraid to use their voices for social, social change. And so. Um, for me, it was more so, man, wha- like what can I do in this space? I don't need to change the world, but I can have some small impact in the area that's around me, uh, which is having conversations because. You know, I'm here with y'all having a conversation too. Um, and so the resources I do see that TCU needs, we need, especially. On the athletic side, we need mental health resources, but more so than mental health resources, I need somebody that looks like me. That can understand a little bit of what I'm going through. Um, so I mean, social, emotional support, like all of it. Um, because when, when the whole summer happened, like everything happened, who do I go to? Am I gonna go to my coaches who, they don't, they don't really care about me. They only brought me in to play football. So do they really care about what was going on in the world? The only thing they're thinking about is how is this impacting the football games? How is this gonna, like, will we be able to play? And if we can play, then you should suck it up. And if you can't suck it up by time, it's, by time, it's time to play, then something's wrong with you. Um, and so for me, how do I juggle it all? I, I really have no idea. I know I lean on a good Lord, that's for sure. Um, without God, I would not be standing here today. Um. And because like, uh, we just need more support. Um, and so it's, it's tough. It's really tough, especially when you know that. Once you start speaking out once, or once I start speaking out, once I start using my voice, it's gonna be a target on my, on my back. And that's just the facts of it. Um, but I can't let that stop me. I can't let that. Change my direction in life because I know some things need to be done. And I have a platform. Um, it's not as big as LeBron James or Colin Kaepernick, but it is a small platform. So I do have the ability to use my voice and. I will continue to do that until I can't anymore because it, it is important. I, I do wanna pave a way for black student athletes, black students. Because I'm a student as well. Um, we can be more than what they have for us to be. We can create space for ourselves. And so, um, that's essentially what I've been trying to do this whole time. Um, it's, it's been tough, but. I think it was all worth it. Every battle that I, I faced, it was, it was all worth it because in the end, something great will come out of it. But TCU, TCU athletics, student athletes, black student athletes, black students, we need those mental health resources because. I mean, who, like, who do we turn to? You can't, you can't point me in the right direction of somebody that I can turn to. And yes, we do have a few people that will listen to, wasn't be there for us, but essentially that's not their job. They were here to do something else. Right? And so we don't wanna overload those people, but, um, we, we kinda have to because we have nobody else to turn to. Um, and I can probably sit here and talk all day about the different resources black student athletes need in order to be successful. I mean, we always preach forty, not four. Uh, you, you bring us in for four years, but our relationships, the resources we get. Lasts for forty years, but what are they? You know, wh- where are they coming from? Why do we still have student athletes that, you, they don't have a job, even though they got their degree? They played football here, they were All-American. So, um, I don't wanna dive too much deeper into that unless we have time later, but um, yeah.
Kelton, thank you for your transparency and, um, you are doing the work. And we are very appreciative of what you are doing and I am so excited to see your future. So keep. Doing the work and we know that work won't be easy and we know a lot of people won't join in on the fight, but you're fighting the good fight. And one thing that you continue to say was, we need community. As strong as we are, as powerful as we are in this room, we need co-conspirators. And co-conspiratorship is a verb because it's tied in with the action. You have to join in. It takes work. It takes time. It takes effort. But this is what black students, staff and faculty are fighting every day. So yes, we have our ba- black community, but we need co-conspirators that are going to speak up for us when Kelton gets tired. Cause inevitably we do get tired. This work requires us to be a hundred percent all the time. And I don't know about y'all, but I don't have a hundred percent all the time. And sometimes I'm not afforded a hundred percent, right? I'm not afforded that time to take off. So we need those co-conspirators to step in and say, you know what, I got this time. I got this right now. You take a break because you've been going at it. You created the mural, you spoke up and no one, uh, backed you up. You reached out for resources for students that are not even here yet, for the students at the K through twelve level. So you know what, I got this for you. So we do need that community and we need others to step up, um, and join us in the fight. And that kinda takes me to the, um, next question for you, Shawnee. Um. You being a part of the medical school here at TCU and which we are ex- uh, extremely proud of you for. Um, can you speak to your experiences as a black medical student pushing through adversity? In the midst of a pandemic that is disproportionately affecting black students?
That question is like a deep breath. Maybe everyone needs to take a deep breath with me. Um. Honestly, I, it's been hard. Um. Being a black med school student is hard in itself. Um. Women in medicine, especially black women in medicine, our statistics are rising. However, black men in medicine, um. We had more black men in medicine in nineteen seventies, like matriculating in medical school than we do now. That's an issue. Um, we had one black male student in my class. We have two in this class. It is a rise, but we need to do better. And so when you just look at being black in medicine, it's. It can be difficult, but then when, now that I am in my second year and so we have like a different schedule where it's like. I'm in the hospitals now, usually at, um, more traditional settings. Um, I would still be in the classroom. Um, but I've started my like clinicals and so. Although we are not on COVID floors as students, you hear about statistics. You, you know what's going on if you keep abreast to, you know, the news and. Just us like being in our greater community. So even my, um. Longest student clerkship leaders or even those that I do research with. Um, she happens to be a black woman who helps with the Healthy Start Initiative. Her name is Misty Wilder. I talked to her on a daily basis because she knows what's going on in Fort Worth. She's from here, she's from the Stop Six community. And so she is telling me about her friends, her family, um, people that she knows. That are being impacted by COVID. And because I, I'm not able to see COVID in its face. I know that we do have black patients that are perishing. Because either they still had to work during this pandemic, like it wasn't a choice for them to stay home. They still had to be employed. They still had, because they're gonna, that, that's another thing that's been happening. People have been evicted. And so there, you, you're telling people, stay home, wear masks, don't work, try to social distance. But then you have people in situations where that's not an option. And so if you're uninsured, you're coming into the hospital, that's another struggle for you. Um. The documentation of it, um, it's just, it ju- it just becomes so many barriers. To then when we get to the point where like, should they be on a ventilator? Do, do they have enough social capital? Cause that ends up happening as well sometimes. Enough social capital where like they're, they're being treated immediately because we think it's necessary. And unfortunately, that does not happen. And as we've seen in cases before where. The black physician who was poorly treated and end up succumbing to COVID. Um, it's really hard to see that because it's even, we have physicians themselves who know the ins and outs. Of this virus, who because of their skin color, they go unnoticed. And so. That has been difficult for me and I think it's been like a chip on my shoulder because it's like. You want to be this empathetic human being, walk into a room, talking to a patient. Who I've, I've talked to patients who've had COVID and they've, you know, um, been treated and, and you know, they're living their best lives. And then I've also talked to some patients who are like, oh, I was at a barbecue. We had a family barbecue and, and I got COVID. It was like, it was like no big deal. And I'm just like, wow. If this was a black person who went to a family barbecue and came in. And it was like the same kinda story, I just don't think it would be as nonchalant because I'm like. You'd probably be on a respirator fighting for your life right now, you know what I mean? And so. It's been really difficult to know that our community is constantly under siege by something. I've been having to talk to my mom about that because I'm like, before there was COVID, there was George Floyd, there was Brown's Hiller. There are so many instances of black lives, um, just under siege. And then now this is another layer. For me, I, I wanted to go to med school so I could fight tha- that, that part of it, like. If there was a pandemic, if there, if there was something where like I could. Understand and treat someone because I know the science behind it and I can have a plan, then it's all good. But what happens when the plan doesn't apply to people who look like you? Then I just feel like, if, for me, I'm like, then, then what do I do? And so that has been really difficult and I'm sorry to sound really somber and it's like I don't have any like positives about it because. It's still happening. It's still here. It's apparent. And then. People come in the conversation like, oh, now we're talking about vaccinations and. Black people have this mistrust of medicine. And it's like, as they rightly should, right? Like, let's acknowledge that before now we're having the conver- now we can. And if we acknowledge that, we can have in the conversation of, why is this important? Why, why getting this vaccination can save lives? And why is your life important to us? You know what I mean? And so it becomes this like multi-layered dynamic that I'm trying to sift through on a daily basis. And, um, you know, it's, it's, it's been difficult. I, I really don't have like a fluffy way of, of saying it. It's just been really, really hard. Um, and I hope, you know, I hope there will be a time where there are enough. Black physicians and pho- physician, black physician allies and Latino physicians and Native American physicians and Asian physicians. Who see the importance of every life is a life and every life is important and every life is worth saving. And what do we do that everyone, when they walk into a clinic, they walk into a hospital. They feel as though they're gonna be cared for with the utmost respect. And it's not like they have to come in there thinking like, if I don't know enough about my disease or if I'm totally, um, oblivious to what's going on. Then, and I, and I can't truly advocate for myself. If I'm not advocating for myself, does that mean I don't deserve my care? Cause I think that's also another layer of it. They're like, you know, advocacy, healthcare advocacy, but like. It's okay if they don't know. That doesn't mean that you don't help them and you don't do your best.
And that's where someone steps in and educates. And I know that you, um, discussed. You may sound somber, but it's not somber because it's your story and it's your perspective and it's real life. And know that even if it has this negative connotation to your storytelling, um, you are the positive. Because you're the light that's shining through for a lot of students that are going to come after you. And so appreciate your transparency in that. Um, I'm going to move to, um, Ms. Dottie. Mel, you serve in so many facets of the university. And not only that, you are, um, your staff member, you're a professor, an adjunct, you're a doctoral student. You're a mom, you're a wife. And so you have so many worlds going on at one time and, um. My question is, can you talk to us about representation on campus? You are someone that wears so many hats. I, I'm just trying to figure out how you do it all and do it all so eloquently. May I make that?
Well, um, first I'll, thank you for that. Um, I have a toddler. So the fact that I have on a clean shirt is like a win for me. Um, so I, I appreciate that. You see, you see more depth in, in, in me than that. No, but, uh, yeah, what, what, what a simple question, but yeah, so complicated, right? Um, yeah, so yeah, I, I jumped in my first class last fall. That was so fun and such a privilege to like be in front of a, be in front of our students. Um, uh, and be in that role, um, along with, you know, being a staff member. Uh, and then also in our wonderful PhD higher ed program, uh, to which I am a doc candidate now in the writing phase. Um, but it's a lot. It's a lot. Um, not just because I, I put so many hats on myself, but each one of them comes, like I said. We're purple horn frogs, but we're also black. I'm proud of all of my identities, but there is complexities. And, and, and burdens with caring multiple, clearing all of them together. And so, um. You know, on the staff side, you know, I do, uh, there are obviously other people of color. Um. There was a point, I mean, I've been at the university for almost five years now. Um, to where I was the only black staff member in my college. Um, when I first got hired, I was like, oh, look at all these fans. I was looking, looking at the staff and I was like, wait, where is everyone else? Um, and I was like, you are everyone else's. Um, but it's grown in those five years and I've seen a lot of the initiatives. You know, go from words on paper to, to action and practice. So I can say that I've seen some of that and I can still say there's a lot, there's a long way to go, right? Um, for me. I think one of the hard part, I think one of the hardest parts for me was being in front of a classroom and. I think one of the hard part, I think one of the hardest parts for me was being in front of a classroom and realizing that. Or I was able to adjunct a UNLF section, so first year or incoming students. That I might be the only black instructor they ever have at this institution was a lot to like digest. Also placed a lot of, I think, responsibility on how I felt, what I needed to deliver and how I needed to deliver it. In in some ways, not, I won't say tokenized, but in some ways, I. I felt like in some ways, in in some of the things that I was thinking I should do, losing. My authenticity of who I am because I was like, wow, what if they don't like me and then they think that black women instruct, you know what I mean? Like. I had students drop my course and they were white students and I was just like, did they? Obviously, students drop, I drop courses. But I was just like, you know, wrestling with that as a first time. Person ever teaching class, like did they drop it because they didn't like me or they didn't like my instruction or they just dropped it just because? Or you know what I mean? Like going through these facets and understanding that there is a racial component happening here. It may not have been for those two students individually who dropped, but. I'm not gonna say that I didn't go through my mind when I see like, oh, a white male student dropped my class. You know, there, I had a thought process as like, what happened there, right? Um, luckily a lot, most of my student, like we stayed in class and we had a wonderful class period. So you push forward with with who's there, but um. It does get to be a challenge and it does feel lonely sometime and it does feel isolating, especially when. You know, there's people to look forward to. And like I say, you know, being overtaxed, sometimes I think. As staff members and you know, even faculty overtaxing each other because there's only a few people that I can go to to say. Hey, what should I do about this? Or hey, like, how would you handle this? There are other people who I could ask for their experience. But I'll be straight up front, straight up front, like I've asked somebody like, hey, this is the situation I'm dealing with. And they gave me advice and I was like, you can do that and say that? I I don't look like you. I I don't think I can say those words and I can't approach it that way, like. I was like, you've seen people who look like me be in situations, like what did they do? And redirect me that way. And so and then lastly, like as a a a student in the classroom. I, you know, I hear our undergrads talk about it. And then as a doc student getting to experience, being a class, being the only person of color in that class. You know, and I was like, oh, okay, you know, no big deal. Like, we're we're graduate students. Like, we're not gonna deal with, you know, some of this. We are old enough to know better and then realizing like, oh, I'm still being tokenized. Like, we're grown, grown. I thought we were, no, we're not past this. And so being in class and having people ask me stuff and I'm like, I I don't know. Why are you asking this of me? I don't speak for my, I thought we all knew that we don't, I don't speak for my entire race here. And so just having to redigress, like I talked about racial bad fatigue is not a theory. You know, some of the concepts I hear students say like, oh, I get tokenized in my class. And then like me being in a class and I'm like, okay, this is still happening at the graduate level. Like, when does this stop? There's a lot. There's a lot that keeps me here and anchored because I see good intentions. I see good people. I see family. I see growth. We got a long way to grow, but I think that with the support that I've been able to build for myself, we're we're growing stronger together. But it's a lot, Leslie. I ain't gonna lie, but I mean, I keep pushing for it because I keep thinking that there's something better for me on the other side of this. Everything I'm doing, I'm grinding hard, right? With the hopes to where. There's gonna be some great professional, you know, outcome for me on the other side of it. And I have to keep hoping that.
Yeah. And I think, um, thank you for your transparency. And I think you have Callie. That's looking up to you, knowing that her mom is contributing to the success of TCU. And so. Just keep doing um the good things and the great things that you are doing because we do appreciate it. Byron, we're gonna close out with you. Okay? Okay, let's do it. Uh, so you were a part of so many organizations as a horn frog. And you serve as a member of the one and only Omega SciFi Fraternity Incorporated. However, how did you find community prior to joining your fraternity? What experiences at TCU can you say have contributed to your success today?
Oh, yeah, a lot of, uh, as I said in my introduction. TC was definitely ground zero, uh, uh, of me developing my leadership skills in the various organizations. I know. I can't remember what organization it was, probably uh leaps or connections or something, but you know. Whatever class Dr. uh Rosencille Boy does or did back there, she she kinda. Had a lot, a lot of things, a lot of influence on uh my perspective on on leadership. Um, but finally, community, um, I don't know, I I just. Cause coming from a background where everyone uh looked like, looked like me and especially like in high school and all throughout elementary school or early. Child education schools, um. I just knew that I wanted to be around my people, what they do, however that, however that looks. Uh, and so I found community by, you know, if I saw somebody black on campus, I ain't never met him before. I met him right then and there. You know, uh, and that's what I did pretty much every day of my TCU community. I built community myself. And so, uh, and and also encouraged other people to build community. Uh, you know, and 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 we balanced things off of each other, we supported each other. Uh, when it come, when it came to racial relations, though. Uh, I I had, I remember one incident, my my freshman year, I I lived in Milton Daniels, which was not the Milton Daniels that it is today. Um, it was, Milton was the uh oldest, uh, the oldest dorm on campus, the 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 one hadn't been renovated yet. But uh, my next door neighbor, uh, wa- was a white guy who, when I moved into campus. Uh, he him and his family was there, his family took me to, I think it was Old South and we had, you know, breakfast, that was cool. Uh, but then I also got into TCU in two thousand eight. You know, two thousand eight was when Obama was first elected, you know, so people were feeling spicy. Ways about that, you know, so uh, uh, my next door roommate, uh, he uh, he made a Facebook post and was like, uh. He was like, when I think of America, I think of McCain, but when I think of fried chicken and watermelon, I think of Obama, right? And so considering Milton again was was the least renovated dorm. Uh, at the time, it was also the cheapest dorm. And so kind of by nature. That's where, you know, most of the black people uh stay, you know, my my roommate, we went to high school together. He was also a community scholar. Uh, he was there, uh, my now line brother, he was, he was in the same dorm. Uh, and he lived up, he lived up there with his, his best friend, who was also black. And it was two more black uh people uh on on my level. So six of us in that dorm. And uh, when I saw that, I knocked on all of their doors and said, we finna go address this right now. You know, and so we all got together, six of us, we knocked on his door. He saw six uh black people staring outside his door. He was like. Oh, no, man, one of my friends was drunk and typed into my computer. He was like, yeah, okay, you better do something like that. You better have some. Uh, but you know, and that's what we did, you know, uh, it's funny when I think about, you know, uh. Other campuses, I mean, I know at TCU, we we were all a family. Uh, there were, there were nobody beef with anybody. Uh, eh, I I can't even think of anything like that, like, because we knew that, you know. We were, we were smaller number and we had to unify. And so that's what I I I genuinely appreciated about my experience at TCU is because we all loved each other. Uh, like we were a a a huge family. Uh, and so, and I think that's important when you're in spaces. Uh, 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 that are not particularly for you, you know, to find that common ground. Uh, with your people and continue to to build those relationships and continue to foster those relationships even to this day. So, uh. I think that's important. I think, uh, uh, you know, realizing, finding finding your tribe essentially. And uh, and going with that. So just kind of how I handle community.
I think that's a beautiful way to wrap up because, I mean, each one of us has discussed why community is so crucial to our success. Um, Byron, you mentioned before Dr. Darren Turner and I would not be where I am. Um, today without his efforts, his contributions to my success. And so, um, community in itself. Is a good thing. However, going back to that component of community is TCU. Right? We need that representation. However, everyone needs to join in on the fight, right? Um, because we get tired. We, I mean, how many conversations are we going to have? Right? Where we're echoing and we're restating things that have been said. And so that community piece is so crucial. Um, and I think, uh, once again, the Race and Reconciliation Initiative. Does just that. We are standing in solidarity as a community, saying enough is enough. Where do we go from here? And if we are truly trying to try um strive for inclusive excellence, what is our next step? And so thank you for sharing that, um, Byron. And this is where we wrap up. I have to thank each of you, I mean, so much. Once again, this room is just so you beautiful. Um, thank you all for being transparent and lending your time to today's session. And I I hope that the session was not empty. I hope that we can continue to push the needle in establishing true social justice for all. And what I will do at this moment is go ahead and pass the mic to um Marcellus, who will close us out for this afternoon.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Um, if we can, can we please give a round of applause to our wonderful, wonderful moderator? Our amazing panelists, uh, they gave us an hour insight, hour of gems. Um, this is what building community looks like, is just having those real honest conversations, those conversations that make some people feel uncomfortable. But these are truths and these truths don't go away by ignoring them. They get hurt when we say them. So again, we thank you all so much. Um, and as we conclude, I wanted to just share with you all, if you wanna hear uh even more. Uh, insightful conversations, we have another panel tomorrow called Real Relationships: How to Build Community. Uh, from three thirty to four thirty, the registration link can be found on our website. Uh, additionally, uh, we have the podcast, Reconcile This. Um, this is a a project that. Uh, Dr. G and myself, we serve as co-hosts. We have these conversations a little bit more. We're talking about doing the work. We're having honest conversations with TCU members, TCU faculty, staff, students. Who are engaging in this work of reconciliation and healing, um, in a very intimate one-on-one setting. Um, so I just dropped the link in the group chat. Uh, you'll be able to find the podcast on all streaming services, Apple, Google, Spotify. Uh, whatever it is, we up there. Uh, and as you see, we're trying to do the work and we're trying to bring people in the fold. Uh, we come as one, but we stand as ten thousand and we say that, we mean it. Um, and with that being said, I would like to turn the mic over to the great, uh, Dr. G to do our official closeout.
Well, thank you there, uh, Brother Perkins. I appreciate that. Um, listen, I'm, you know, while while everyone has their screens up and everything, um, I would just like to just follow up with the brief, you know, summary of some of the. The the key thoughts that 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 are heard, right? Cause they're profound. I mean, because we did have until four thirty. I mean. I mean, you you don't feel like handing out just for a couple more minutes? I mean, is is that cool? So here's the thing, um, Ms. Dottie. What you described is termed the imposter syndrome. I'm curious, has anyone else felt this idea of, you know, like the consciousness of like, I'm just not good enough? I'm just curious. When when Ms. Dottie was describing that, did anybody else feel that way? Billy, Billy, you you said, how, but why? Like, why, why did you? If you made it to this point, wouldn't you be confident? Like, yeah, I got it. But why, why would you doubt yourself? Like, why?
Uh, well, I don't feel it as often now. But it's more so about. It was more so about other people's perception of me as opposed to how I feel about myself. Um, and I guess to to elaborate on that a little bit more, I remember, uh. Again, my freshman year, I'm just talking with some of my colleagues in class, you know, and uh. I pretty much told them I had a full ride and they were like, what do, the whole, do you play sports thing, right? Uh, and so it's like, man, dude, like, yeah, it's it's also like, am I that exceptional, right? Like. I I'm a human, I'm black, and I'm one of the few black to make it, to blacks to make it. So like, am I really that exceptional? You know, uh, you know, I mean, you you look at yourself, you you just live your life and you just, it's what you do. You know, uh, and and for me to be to where I where I was at, it's like, I mean, I don't feel any special. But you know, it's it's, you know, uh, and all these other folks, they've had private school from, you know. Two years old through through now. And I've been a public school student all my life, you know. Uh, and so that's, you know, that's how you feel going in, you know, I'm taking accounting for the first time and they've taken accounting, you know. All four years of high school. Uh, so that's, that's what you feel as a freshman. Uh, you know, but then you realize that, well, then I realized that, you know, uh, I took the same SAT test as everybody else. You know, I I feel the same application as everybody else and the same class as everybody else, getting the same books as everybody else. Uh, and getting your grades back on your test and seeing that you are doing well, okay. Uh, I'm I'm just as good, if not better than everybody else. Uh, so it's it's, I think it's more of it, it's just a shock, uh, for a lot of us to. Uh, enter into grounds that, you know, people before us. Uh, hadn't answered, people before who looked like us had not answered them, answered them before, but once you get in. You understand that like, everybody's making it up as they go along and you should feel bad for feeling that way.
Yeah, and if I could add, I think, I think it surpasses the freshman stage, Byron. Um, because just being a PhD student, as Mel uh discussed before, it's still very prevalent at that stage as well. Where you are speaking up in class, where you are making a statement and you are being questioned based off your knowledge. And so you're speaking about research that you have done, you're speaking about research that is in the books, right? It's all there in front of us. However, because you are the ones stating it. It can't be that credible because it's coming from a person of color or it's coming from a black woman, right? So that imposter syndrome is real, but I almost like to argue that that's a problem of the others. Because they're posing it on us, right? I know I filled out the same implication. I remember when I first got to TCU, I was questioning what sport do I play? Now, take it, I took it as a compliment because I was like, maybe I still got it, you know, because I did play team volleyball. So. However, when I actually, you know. Took a step back, it was more so of a, there's no way you can be at TCU without being an athlete. Like, there's no way that you're here and after I stated, actually, I'm in the PhD higher educational program. It's almost like a, oh. Oh, you don't play a sport. You're here based off your merit. That's interesting. You're here the same way I'm here. And so I think I I almost argue that. The imposter syndrome is, um, a pite of the other. Um, trying to reinforce, um, systemic injustices into who we are. But we're all in this room for a reason and we've all.
Excuse, excuse our rudeness and and interrupting, because you know, the conspiracy shot that, you know, take me out, but I'm back. Or I'm black, I'm sorry. Which one? Either way, I'm both. So the idea is this. You're actually not here like everyone else. Because maybe you didn't benefit from uh all the resources, uh, all the assistance, uh, all the support that many of our others. Dude, I'm not saying every, one of my white brothers and sisters was born with the silver spoon in their mouth. I'm not saying that. I have seen some G wagons, I've seen some Teslas, I've seen some, hello, anyone listening to me? I've seen some Audi Audis. I'm not saying everybody, but I, listen, I got my Prius in the faculty lot and I'm like, man, what's going on over there and everybody? Not everybody has a silver spoon, but many people have benefited from resources and support. So when you say you're here like everybody else, actually, when you talk about imposter syndrome, perhaps, kind of sort of maybe, you actually went above. And beyond. I mean, what was Dottie, she was here handling, you know, like child rearing and 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 everything in addition to all this?
You're gonna get me in trouble. Um, no, I mean, but you know, a posit- imposter syndrome is not like a light switch. It's not, oh, I have it today. Oh, it's over. I got past it, right? It it's a constant battle. And like Leslie says, part of it, I think, is other people imposing it. And for me, it's it's been a struggle. It's been a battle. And. I I think I'm on, not on the other side. I'm I'm winning right now. Hashtag winning the imposter syndrome right now. But I think part of it that 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 makes it creep back in too is is the other and what people. The advice you get sometimes, like he's like, I wear multiple hats, so maybe I'm asking for a professional advice, like, hey, I I thought about doing this. And I have learned to, my my weapons, you ask how I cope, is through truth and transparency. And one of those truths and transparency is I was recently, you know, asking about physicians at higher ed. Even some within the in this institution and was talking about that in lack of experience. And I was like, I'm about to have a PhD, like, there's not even other jobs, like, I can do that. And I asked that person, if I was a white male with the same credentials, would you be giving me the same advice? And I was like, I'm gonna stop you because I know it's a no. Talk to me like I mean, but like, like, let's be real with like what you're telling, like, you know what I mean? Like, the imposter syndrome gets put back on because. When you're trying to climb, even when you're climbing past that, like all these degrees, all this work experience. But when you wanna go further, people are gonna categorize you and put you where they think that you belong.
So what you said is so very fundamental. I'm gonna tie it to some, some. So what you said is so very fundamental, so I'm gonna tie it to some, some other pieces I heard, because. The great Dr. W B DuBois talked about many, 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 many years ago, something that is unfortunately still applicable today. For anyone listening to me right now, if you haven't checked it out already, The Souls of Black Folk is something you want to check out. And he talks about this idea of double consciousness, right? The two-ness, and I think you heard a lot of that from many of our panelists today, this idea of African American, right? So, um, accepted, I'm a human being, I have two eyes and, okay, great, but at the same time, I'm, I'm just still treated a little bit differently. And so I just wanted to pivot, Ms. Cox, when you talk about being a pioneer, you like looking around and it's just, you know, the only time you see someone looks like you is when you walk by a mirror. Right? You know, like on campus, we walk by a glass window, that's the only time you see someone looking like you? Like, can you talk to us about like the, the, the pressure, right? Because this idea of like, because what it does is this double consciousness is pernicious. Because if someone's giving you advice, question, do you not question whether they're giving you honest advice? Or maybe they're altering it because of who and what you are, like, how do you deal with that?
It was like difficult at the beginning, definitely, um, because I'm actually like working on an abstract about this right now in medicine. I'm following, um, the first African-American female neurosurgeon, orthopedic surgeon and trauma surgeon. So like literally just finished that today and so it's crazy that you asked me this question because. They talk about how some people are like, you know, if you want to give back to your community, then you should do primary care. You shouldn't shoot for these subspecialties, especially surgical specialties. Um, and, and it's like putting this, this honus on you like, okay, you do want to give back to your community, but still. There's someone in your community who's gonna need a specialist and that specialist needs to look like you for them to trust you. And so that has been a thing for me, especially because I know Byron talks about it a lot, where it's just like. You come from, like, being raised in South Florida, like, everybody looked like me. And so when I got advice from high school counselors, it was just like, girl, you could do this, like, you can do anything. But then when you transition into higher education, it's just like people put you in this box and it's like, oh, you can attain this. Or the scores can determine this and then you start feeling this imposter syndrome, like, man, they gonna find me out. Are they gonna find out that maybe I didn't have a perfect MCAT score, I didn't have a perfect S A C score? And can I really, you know, kill it on my boards in order for me to dictate what kind of physician I'm gonna look like? And so it, it becomes very difficult and sometimes I've kind of had to like tease out, you know. Are they saying this to me because I'm a black woman, are they saying me because I might suffer from test anxiety? Are they saying this to me because they know that I have like a very passionate spirit? So maybe I should do like pediatrics or something like that, I, I love people. Or is it that you really witness like, these are my strengths and even if I'm not there all the way, can you help me to get there? Um, so that's what I've, I've been trying to do and, and it's, and it's, and it's a, it's a journey, definitely.
So Ms. Cox, I'm so glad you said a couple of things, first of all, you mentioned the word help. And I think when we talk about mental health and things of that nature, or just in general, I mean, you know, the idea that help is something that we can seek out. I, I, I think that's, that's a perfectly good reminder about how that doesn't take away from you as an individual in terms of what you're accomplishing. The idea that you're seeking help and assistance, right? I mean, think about it, you know, Kelton Holland's just talking about, you played football, I mean, you, there's one coach, but there's a lot of help with that head coach. All the assistant coaches and things of that nature, there's a lot of help, but yet, you know, we focus on the individual. So think about you as coaching your own program, you need, you need, you need people to help out and, and chip in. And then going to your, your piece about the whole imposter, think about the Winter Olympics. Like, if I were to be a loser, like luge, you know what I'm saying, you sit down and, you know, you know, luge? You, you, you don't know what I'm talking about, luge, so what happens is they don't just race the course on the gold medal rounds, no. They get a chance to do up, practice, they go down the course, get the chance to do the turns and, and figure it out, okay, and that, you know, the thirty meters, I'm going to have to, right? This idea that I'm gonna have to scope it out. What was interesting for us, we feel imposter syndrome when this is our first time running the course. I mean, I mean, I don't know about you, but I didn't have anybody to talk to at my table who already been there, did that. This is our first time running the course and we're still getting medals, hello, is anyone listening? We're still getting medals, hello, hello? So, so Hollins, I want to, I want, I want to ask you this, right? You know, we're about to end, so like, talk to me about this, this one-way street relationship, you know what I'm saying? What is it? Because you actually are the athlete, right? In terms of people coming up to you and only wanting one thing, did we win? Like, how do you still in your mind balance out your humanity, I'm more than what you see?
Yeah. No, it's, it's, it's really real, real, um, and I noticed that one day, um, I was just walking through the campus. Had on my regular, uh, you know, going in the class clothes, so just a TCU shirt, shorts or whatever. Um, if you didn't know me, you probably could guess I played football, um, you were stereotyped that I played football. So I had these two, uh, kids come up to me, two white kids come up to me and say, what number are you?
John, hello, what's your name, how you doing, but what number, are you serious? To the personalizing, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm.
I'm, I'm happy you reacted like that because when I, when I tell this to people, I don't think they understand what I'm trying to say. They came up to me and asked me, literally the only words they said to me, what, what number are you? What you mean, what number am I? Um, but that's, that's when it really hit me and so from that moment forward, when I'm on an elevator, somebody asks me, oh, what sport do you play? I play tennis, what sport you don't even guess, you know what I'm saying? Um, but yeah, it's, it's tough, and I think what helps me is that I, I understand that people come to me because they only want one thing. Or, you know, I'm in this position because of my athletic abilities, so these coaches, they only want one thing. And I think part of it is understanding, so once you understand it, you can operate, or I can operate better knowing that, right? Um, because like I said, I came in as a student athlete and then I kind of transitioned into an athlete student. Well, if I'm only caught up in that, I sort of been athlete student, I would never be able to get out of this trap. But the second that I understand what's going on, who I am, how I'm being treated, then I can maneuver and be more than a student athlete and create these new, um, passage, these passageways for. People coming behind me, um, but it, it's funny, it's crazy, it's tough, um, and I, I struggle with imposter syndrome in class. Um, because it's like, I mean, the reality of it is, I'm not here because I'm an academic, I was here because I played football, I played the system very well. I graduated and I was able to get to my next degree, it's not because I'm just that smart. However, I am that smart, but I feel like I'm not that smart. Um, and I find myself performing better or feeling more comfortable doing work when I have to submit it to my professor. Rather than submitting it to like a discussion thread or anything like that, because I, I don't know, I just feel like I'm being judged, you know, it is like. When I, when I'm working in groups, I'm like, dang, they probably feel bad or they probably don't want to be in my group because it's like, dang, we have the dumb job. We have the black student athlete, we have the only black male and I think about that all the time and it's, it's funny because I, I got into it with. Uh, this is my undergraduate years, I got into it with a, a group mate, um, she was like, man, you need to turn in your work, da, 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 da. I'm like, look, it's not gonna come at five PM on a Tuesday because I'm out here on the field banging my head. And she didn't under, she didn't understand that and, and so we just got into it and I was like, one thing you gotta understand is like. I, I don't have all day, I'm gonna get it done, it may come to you at two AM, it's gonna get done, so I don't need you to, you know what I'm saying? Like, treat me like that, like, that's, that is very disrespectful.
No, you're right, because essentially you have a full-time job. I mean, you, you know what I'm saying, in addition to the full-time job of studying, wouldn't it be nice if the only thing you had to do was sit around and read? Right? Wouldn't that be nice? And so, twenty seconds, Brother Bailey, uh, because I, I think I heard from her, but I just want to go back to one of the things you said about that Peach Bowl analogy. So you think that's an apt analogy, this idea of you did everything you could, but yet you still not where you think you should be?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not, you know, where you think you should be, but where, you know, the powers that be think you should be, right? And so, so that, that, that's how I look at it, um, and it was, it was just telling to me how so many, you know, people could. Identify, easily identify and passionately identify the, uh, the, the, the injustice in that decision or injustice, right? In football rankings, you know, but they can't see that same sort of injustice when it comes to, uh, black people and minorities of, of all different backgrounds. So, uh, that, that's my, that's my starting speech when I talk to anybody who just, who just ain't getting it. The, the, the Ben Shapiro apologists of the world, that's, that's how I talk to them.
No, no, I, I understand, you know, and I, I didn't say it, but I heard somebody was saying, if, if only some of us cared about black people the way we cared, we cared about our dogs.
Yep.
I'm, I'm sorry, y'all, I'm, I'm just, I, I, I'm just repeating what I, I heard. So the last question is gonna go to Her Majesty, that's you, Ms. Ekki. It took a lot of thought and energy to pose these questions, they were very, very well done, very well done. And so I, I'd just like to hear from you, just, just in closing, like, what, what, what were you processing and what, what, your, 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 your intentions in, in trying to. You know, facilitate the conversation, like, what did you want, you know, for people to walk away with in terms of the space that you helped to facilitate and create?
Well, knowing these individuals and knowing, um, their stories, I just feel like they have contributed to the success of TCU. However, if TCU cannot see it, then we have a problem. And so we talked a lot about community, we talked a lot about the resources that are lacking for, um, black students, black staff and black faculty. Um, we reinforced some of the tokenism that's hap, uh, or discussed some of the tokenism that's happening, whether that be for student athletes. Or at the medical school, um, we talked about representation, um, we've done it all. And so we've laid out our lives for the audience members that we're watching. And if you decide that this fight is now not your fight, the fight, we still have a problem, right? Because we serve in so many different capacities, um, Mel serving, um, as a student, as a faculty, as, um, a staff. Byron as an alumni who's still contributing to the success of TCU, Kelton as a student athlete who, I mean. He said, that mural in my, from my perspective, connects what's been disconnected for years. And then Shanice, I mean, she's breaking barriers at every single, in every single capacity that she can. And so now it's time for TCU to step up in the capacities that it has to offer. Because if we are truly fighting towards inclusive excellence, inclusive excellence does not afford the opportunity to only some communities. Inclusivity includes everybody and so until we have that platform to say we are all in this together. We haven't made it and so I'm hoping that this conversation was as fluid and as transparent as it can be. And hopefully the last kind of nudge for those who were indecisive of whether they should join in on the fight. I was hop, hoping, um, that this conversation is what would push them over. Um, and so those were my thoughts and I'm just so thankful for each person that was able to serve in the capacity because, um, they look. Beautiful, they, I mean, they spoke so eloquently, but I, I just want everyone to know, as soon as we end this conversation, they're gonna go back to doing the work. That makes TCU as great as it is and so they don't get enough kudos, so hopefully this hour and a half. Was a little bit of, um, my thankfulness for what each of them contribute to making, um, our society as great as it should be.
Absolutely and amen, thank you for that, Ms. Ekki, thank you to all of our panelists, thank you to Mr. Perkins for gracing us with his presence as well. And again, we're going to continue to stay in community, stay in contact and stay in conversation, you can join us tomorrow, same bat time, same bat channel. Also on Thursday, in case you haven't heard, we have LT, excuse me, L frickin' T, will also be joining us, giving a keynote at five PM. And then on Friday, won't we just hang out, Race and Reconciliation can be about coming together and so we're going to do that in the Student Commons from three to five, we're having a block party. But again, if you can't make those, make it to our website, www.tc.edu backslash R R I. Let's check it out, like Ms. Ekki said, it's not just for black indigenous and people of color, it's for anybody who rocks purple, right? How about that, right? How about that? So again, I can't promise what's going to happen as a result of this Race and Reconciliation initiative, but I can pledge to you. That we are doing the best we can with what we have. Thank you.